All right, it's time fifteen. Thank y'all for coming. I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of four members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one. At this time, I need a motion to certify our agenda. Motion made by Robert. Second by Scott, all four. That's seven oh. Robert's the leadest in prayer tonight.
Lord, we come today, thank you for your mercy and your grace and any blessings you give us every day. Lord, we ask for protection for this country and this community, and especially for our staff and students amid this COVID virus that's plaguing our country, and for heal for those that have contracted that disease. In our hearts and minds, as we make decisions today with the business at hand, that these decisions will have a positive impact on the district. Forgive us where we fall short of your glory and help us be a light on others. Thanks for asking your son's holy name.
Let's have a little prayer pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you for the republic from which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas. One nation, for God, one unity.
All right, Dr. McCullough, do we have some special recognitions tonight?
Yes, sir, we do. As you know, in the month of September, we start recognizing our teachers and auxiliary staff members of the month. And this month, we have a couple of extra specials we're going to do as well. So first, I'm going to do our Elementary Teacher of the Month. If I could have Ms. Adrian Boland step forward, please. All right, says Ms. Boland exemplifies leadership daily by serving as a mentor for all teachers, facilitating planning and stepping in when she sees a need. She develops a positive rapport with students and staff. Ms. Boland is a team player and always puts her students first. She is committed to growing professionally and willing to help make us all succeed. We are blessed to have her as part of our Mount Vernon Elementary School family. So Teacher of the Month for Mount Vernon Elementary is Ms. Adrian Boland. You want to say anything?
No, I just appreciate it.
Next, I'd like to have Ms. Leslie Butler come forward, please. Ms. Leslie is our middle school teacher of the month for September. And it says that she has a genuine concern and love of her students. She is willing to work above and beyond to meet their needs. She is always looking for ways to make all situations to be the best they can be. She's always willing to help and go the extra mile. She cares about her students and is a great teacher. She is positive, warm, and cares about all of her students' education and future. So the Mount Vernon Middle School Teacher of the Month is Ms. Leslie Butler. Ready, want to say anything?
No, okay.
Used up all words today in class. So our High School Teacher of the Month is Ms. Kenna Clausen. She is not able to be here tonight, so we're going to recognize her again in October as well. So our Auxiliary Staff Member of the Month is Ms. Candy Arzola. It says, Ms. Candy says, moving from a community office position, she has been with the district for two years. She is reliable and helpful. She does not know the answer, she does not hesitate to research and see if she can be of assistance. She is always very helpful, kind, and respectful to our students, teachers, parents, and guardians. I don't think we could have school without her, it says. Says she has really been on the forefront of helping students and parents through the front office, especially with their temporary loss of a secretary at the junior high. She's worked very hard to make up for that gap all the while with a very positive attitude. Says she is consistently seeking methods to help and support the teachers on campus and always looking to help make our day easier. And she's truly helped in time of need for several teachers this past month by supporting their subs and while they were out of the classroom. And so she is, she can multitask and is always happy to contribute. And so Auxiliary Staff Member of the Month for September is Ms. Candy Arzola.
Thank you.
You want to say anything?
Well, thank y'all, thank you for the ones floating, thank you, Miss Woodard, I appreciate it.
All right, next, we're giving a special award out this month for two people who really stepped in and really helped out on something that could have been, could have turned into a bad situation. And so I would like Mr. Chris Hensley and Ms. Elsa Whitehurst both to come forward, please. We are presenting them this evening with what we are calling the Mount Vernon Tiger Award. And so here's a little bit of a background of what happened. Says the definition of initiative is the ability to assess and initiate things independently. Is our Core Value of the Month for September at the elementary. Chris Hensley and Elsa Whitehurst showed initiative during an emergency situation on September the third at the elementary school. Had it not been for their quick thinking and responses, the situation could have had a different outcome. Chris noticed a parent in distress and responded accordingly. He was able to disable the vehicle and call for emergency assistance. After removing the student from the situation, Chris stayed with the parent until emergency personnel took over. His quick actions resulted in the best possible resolution. Elsa assisted by quickly getting the student inside the building and keeping the morning drop-off moving as calmly as possible. Both of these employees handled the situation just as they've been trained and with the utmost professionalism and compassion. This situation could have turned out very differently had it not been for their actions. So we are honored this evening to present Mr. Chris Hensley and Elsa Whitehurst the Mount Vernon Tiger Awards tonight. Y'all want to say anything?
I'm really glad that she's doing well.
Absolutely.
And all the criticals taken.
Well, thank you both for what you did again. You really stepped in and made a difference. Not that you don't do every day, but that one, especially in an emergency situation. Thank you for what you did, hope and take care of not just the parent, but our students. And we greatly appreciate what you did. Thank you, appreciate it.
Elsa, we're gonna do a picture. I'll tell you what, after, let's do one more agenda item and then we will do a picture and then it'll get pinned in here. Okay, so let's see. Got that, took care of. Next, item, item three, open forum for public comments, we just have one tonight. Ms. Lindsay, you want to come speak with us?
Sure.
You'll come up to the podium.
So on our open forum, you have five minutes and you can't call names, you can save position.
We'll talk.
Start talking. Have you got ten minutes worth of material, you think?
No, I just jotted down some notes really fast because I was hoping I wasn't gonna have to stand up and speak. Okay, I'm Lindsay Bliss and I just want to bring up an issue that I feel is keeping some of our students out of academic minutes and in the office too frequently, and it's the dress code. I feel like even with the middle school, I've had students come into the shop just recently looking for pants without holes because their middle school children are scared they're gonna have to wear an orange jumpsuit. I'm not sure where that's coming from. High school, they're not mentioned in the orange jumpsuit, but I feel like it's, there needs to be some revisions in the dress code. I feel like there's some dress codes that are in question in regards to holes in the pants. My child got dress coded last week for holes in her knees. I questioned it, I didn't feel like it was an appropriate call. And she was out pretty much half, half a day. And in high school, half a day is a lot because it's hard to catch up. And so I feel like the dress code needs to be looked at again and there needs to be changes. I think that's all, I really just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Next item, item four, consider our consent agenda, approval of our consent agenda. Any questions on that consent agenda?
The September budget amendments, those were emailed to you, I apologize, those were not in your packet. The explanation was, but the actual budget itself was not, so we have an email on those. Majority of what that dealt with was items that a PO was put together for that should have been received before the end of August was not, so for an alternate purpose, those had to be adjusted, they had to be adjusted to this year from a current standpoint. Came, came out of fund balance, but now pushed back, but a full back, so. The main, the main thing that was the special invoice that's not being received yet was around ninety-seven thousand dollars, about thirty-one thousand.
Okay. Uh, to approve the consent agenda? I would take my own end of the week.
Take a motion to approve the consent.
Motion made by Josh.
Second.
Second by Linda, all four. Seven oh, I'm thinking, you're thinking these people said I lied to them because I told them to get out of here on this one. So let's do a picture right now.
So all of our teachers, our auxiliary, our even Tiger Award recipients will come forward? Come around the period, probably more and more to get behind this. Oh, come on, we'll slide around.
Ready, Ms. Sunro?
Yep, one, two, three.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
All right, y'all, congratulations. Y'all are welcome to stay for the remainder of the award party if y'all would like to.
We just got a few action items, but there's actually something on here, the teacher's not on here, but y'all will hear it on the other stuff anyway, so. Thank y'all for having us. Yeah.
She has to say.
She has to say.
Action items, item eight, consider approval of resolution regarding precautionary leave in response to COVID nineteen pandemic.
Okay, so as we've gotten, you know, as of, when the school started last year, the federal government required us to provide COVID leave for our staff up to ten days. When we got to Christmas, we, that went out. As a district, we kind of extended that, so we came into this year without doing so. We, we've kind of waited to see kind of what's happened. We are seeing some of our staff members who are testing positive and having to, to leave in an effort to, you know, try to continue to try to take care of our, our staff best way we can. Want to bring to you an opportunity tonight to possibly go back to the precautionary leave we've had for our staff members, a little different from how we had it last year. You know, our teachers, if they, if they are not themselves positive, but have just been close contact, they, we now have tested available with school, with our school nurses do a rapid test that we've received from the state. So they can still come on close contact, only now, but if they are positive, then they, then they have to stay out. And so bring to the office tonight with a resolution to extend some leave for our staff members who themselves test positive. It will only be for that, if they have a family member at home or a child or something like that, then this would not count for that. It would only be for a person who, who tests positive and misses days of work for them. Leadership team, we've kind of tossed around seven days, eight days, I know what you have before you is ten days. You know, and I think as we've looked at districts around the state and some other things that they've done with that, it's, it's varied from those numbers right there, seven to ten. I kind of lean toward eight because I think a weekend's gonna fall, will fall in there anyway to extend it to ten days according to when it could, two weekends could fall in there. But as a board, if you, if you feel ten's better, I can support that as well.
And this is not a rapid test positive, but a full-blown test.
Well, it would, it would, so.
Because there's a lot of false positive positives with that.
We've sent, we've sent doctor confirmed. Doctor confirmed or through our school nurse testing process are your two options. We can have a resolution.
Yes. Is the, is the school nurse a rapid test?
It is.
There's a lot of false positives with that.
But again, but, but, but even, but even with that, but even with that, if our teacher comes and is, and so through the close contact, they're having to be tested every other day at school. If our nurse tested, when they test positive, they've got to go home. So regardless if it's a false positive or not, if it is, it is, but there's, they still have to go home because they tested positive. So. You know, the resolution that you have in your packet says ten days and so again, I want to be the pleasure of the board. Again, I can go, I, I'm, I'm good with eight, I can support ten either one.
Is there a specified time by the state if they test positive, how long they have to be out? Or can they come back with a negative test, or is it?
You're out ten days.
Ten days, that's okay.
That's ten fälle, or is it not ten school days?
Well, we'd also like to, we'd also like to retroactive, make this retroactive back to the beginning of school. Since we've already, we're already four weeks in, we have some teachers who missed earlier that should not miss that opportunity because they got, they were positive before this happened. Do you know the total number of staff? I know currently right now, I look at the date, we have five staff members out today, district wide. That's kind of been, that's about the high part. Again, I know the numbers we've had are, some of those are the same people.
You want a total number? Ten.
Ten total?
Ten, counting both of them.
Since that August twelve?
It's probably ten.
Seven, eight, nine, ten.
Ten total staff, that's it right there.
This is total staff, right?
It's totally, correct, that's right, it would be for all staff on this.
So be transparent, if they're hourly paid.
It's eighty hours, if you go with that, it's based on eighty hours versus.
Okay.
That's how we look at that.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's perfect, we'll need to hear. So. I've heard several eights. Here with eight, I'll take that motion however you want to make it. Or I can make the motion, we second on it, we roll. But eight sounds pretty good.
I'm moved that we approved the resolution regarding precautionary leave in response to COVID nineteen pandemic with the amendment of changing it from ten business days to eight business days that the school will take.
Motion made.
You can deconseguise.
They get eight consecutives.
And, and only resolution, you see, it goes through the thirtieth day of June twenty twenty-two. So this would just be for this current school year. And then if, hopefully, prayerfully, this does not continue to be something that we're dealing with on an ongoing basis. And if it is something, we would have to look at it again next year.
So be transparent before I take a second on that eight days there. If we get, say, if you get it, you're out four days here and you get a negative test, you come back, can you use the rest of your days, four days later?
No, if, if, if you come out positive, you don't need to come back in four days with a negative test, you're out ten days.
Okay. Okay. So if they get two positives, then it's.
The second time is the worst time.
Then eight days, okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion made by Brooke, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Linda. All four.
Thank you, appreciate it, so, thank you for doing that for our staff members.
Be consider approval of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, grade seven reading instrument and T E A waiver.
That's why I was gonna share with you all that.
And I'll print the amendment and the agenda, so you know how to proceed with yours as well, precautionary leave. Every four or five years, the commissioner comes out and decides what diagnostic reading assessments we can use for kindergarten, first, second, and seventh grade. And we always administer a diagnostic assessment to middle school so that we can level to see what interventions are needed. And in the past, the state has given districts the option to do an alternative instrument. If they had a committee, we had a district committee that deemed that that was a good instrument to use for that. The state's made that change now and they've indicated that we have to utilize a waiver if we are not using one of the assessments listed on this list that is in your board book. And I'm recommending that we place the waiver this year because we are using two different reading diagnostic assessments at the middle school. One is I X L Learning, which is part of our intervention program. So they take that diagnostic assessment and it prescribes what skills they need. We also have STAR Reading, which is part of Renaissance Learning, it's also part of the A R program. And so our English Language Arts teachers also have that diagnostic assessment to administer. And so we're feeling we're getting good viable quantitative data. With those two, we don't need to tack on one more assessment to say for the sake of testing. I Station, we do use at the elementary, it's a grade program. A lot of the reason that we don't use it at the middle school is it tends to be a little elementary. When I've used it at middle schools in the past, by the time you're a seventh grader, it's a little bit cartoony and they don't like it. And that's why we use I X L Learning, it's much more driven to middle school students. So again, a great diagnostic assessment for reading gives us good data and it supports that. So this waiver in place will allow us to continue to use that without adding another one.
Any questions, that's why I opened that?
Thank you.
Need a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, grade seven reading instrument and T E A waiver as presented. Motion made by Leanne. I second it, all four. That's seven oh.
Thank you.
Item C, consider approval of resolution for candidate nominations to serve as twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Franklin County Appraisal Board of Directors.
As you know, Mount Vernon I S D has two thousand eight hundred eighty-six votes toward the Franklin County Appraisal District. In your board book, you see that those who are currently on the board are Jay Scott, Roger Jakir, Ralph Robertson, Scott Lee, and Austin Purrier. It is my understanding that all have expressed willingness to continue serving. And so be my recommendation to the board that, that those five continue to be there.
Okay. We'll give the message of five. I'm making a nomination that we nominate the five candidates for the Franklin County Appraisal District Board of Directors, which would be Ralph Robertson, Scott Lee, Austin Purrier, Jay Scott, Roger Jakir. Do I have a second? Second by Robert, all four. Seven oh on that one. Information items, enrollment totals.
Okay. In your board book, you see that as of last week, we're at fifteen thirty, I believe today, that actually, just we're printing award fifteen thirty-nine. And so we are, we're continuing to inch upwards a little bit, which is good. And hopefully, we'll be able to continue to stay right there or just not even move up a little bit more in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. So we've still got some stuff, when we come back, we're gonna have a board rough workshop regarding our facilities planning. But at this time, the board will convene to closed session. The board will now convene to a closed meeting to discuss personnel matters as supposed to go the agenda and allowed by the Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one point oh seven four. It is now five thirty-nine P M.
Administrator, if you'll give us about twenty, twenty-five minutes, hopefully, or later than six fifteen, we'll be back in here and we'll move forward with that, okay?
All right, six forty-nine P M, the board convenes back into awkward session. Dr. McCullough, is there anything on the personnel reports?
There is none.
All right, at this time, we will enter into a board workshop regarding facilities planning.
This time, I'll ask Mr. Von Gallagher from Gallagher Construction to come forward. He's got a presentation he's gonna share with us tonight and give us opportunity to ask some questions and, and kind of pick his brain as well. So we're gonna, we're gonna move out here a little bit.
Okay.
That's all right.
You bet.
It's good right here.
You're good, yes, sir, you're good.
Well, thanks for having me tonight, I appreciate being here, I'm on Gallagher, Gallagher Construction. We've got a facility report to put together, kind of go through some thoughts and discussions and things that we've looked at. I'm gonna be very clear before I start, this is just thirty thousand feet, some suggestions, some ideas. This is an entire process. So this isn't a script, it isn't anything like that, this is y'all's facility. This is y'all's plan and that's what it needs to be at the end of the day, whatever you want it to be. So we just try to bring some, some suggestions from other places, things that we've seen, things that we've identified that may help the district out in the long term. But that's kind of how the process starts. So it starts by just kind of pointing out some things and showing some things. And then kind of get the ball rolling with suggestions and motives and those kind of things. So it's very informal, so please stop me anytime, I can answer questions. If I can't answer them, I'll try to get the answers for you so that we can kind of move through those things, okay? First step, I use the pointer right, so that I'll make the scroll a bit quicker. So we're gonna have an overview of existing conditions of the middle school and high school, some options, potential budgets, and then actually, this is probably say potential budget factors, and then the next steps in the process, so.
Von, can I just say one thing since it's being recorded, we'll just be posted, people will watch it afterwards. The reason that we're just looking at middle and high school is because our elementary was, is our newest building and really from a facility standpoint is not one of the key areas that we're looking at right now, so.
There's an overview of the facilities, I know you're all familiar with those, but that's kind of our starting basis to start with that on everything. Then these are some areas and focus that we look at as we're going through the process. The cafeteria, band halls, BOAG program, plus student circulation, ball fields, be a baseball softball as well as football field, and then the administration. We've kind of highlighted those in red, recent those areas that we looked at and we'll have some subsequent pictures here to kind of identify some areas to take a look at. So there's the existing middle school cafeteria. It's, as you can see, it's got some columns in it, it's next to the band hall. It may have some functions that can be utilized as you move through this. Maybe it's repurposed, maybe that area can help with some other areas, possibly culinary arts because it would already have the food service facilities. But it's a, it's a good area, just needs a little bit of work with it, but it may very well work out to be helpful as you kind of work through the building on some other opportunities. The band hall, it's in really good condition. And I'll say, as we went through the facilities, the facilities have been really taken care of. I, I know some of them are older in age, but it's obvious that the staff's done a great job taking care of them. The maintenance partners done a great job taking care of them. And that should be really noted and key because that's not something that we always see. Sometimes things are in disrepair because of the collecting, that is not the case for what you guys have. Y'all done a fantastic job, should be commended for that. And it's, it's really nice to see. For me, it's really nice to see for something that I was a part of too. It's really disheartening when it's not that way, but anyway, just, just so you know, sometimes it's a perception that, well, things aren't being taken care of, that is not the case at all. Things are being taken care of and that's why they've gotten this far and that's why they are a possibility to be the longevity that they had and it's just time for some, you know, things to take place over time. So this is the band hall, it's in good condition, appears to be undersized for the amount of use, the amount of students, the amount of participation in it. That, that happens, that's, that's another sign of a great program, it's got a lot of people that participate in it. And so it needs probably some modifications to assist with that. Media center, same, it, it may be, it could fall into that category for renovation of the media center at the high school. Possibly scenario to address the cafeteria cafeteria needs, get a kitchen to it, possibly make that your cafeteria. There's a lot of research that needs to be done through that process to see where the optimal place is. If a kitchen wants to be addressed at the high school. To where, where's the best place for it? Where's the best place for drop off? Where's the best place for the grease trap and the plumbing and the water and those kind of things? So we don't pick a place that seems like it makes sense, but then there's a lot of infrastructure costs because it's not located in the optimum place. But this is something to consider uh, through that process, has a big open space to assist with that. The BOAG, again, uh, a program that's heavily used, obviously from the facilities, you can see. Uh, the, it needs some additional space just from the amount of equipment that it has, the amount of storage that it has, the tools to be used. Uh, everything's accessible and organized. It's just, it's heavily used, which is exactly what you want. You don't want a program that's not. Uh, but obviously that program being used at that level and that's part of the facility probably needs to be addressed in a, a different space. It also has some what we call TASS or ADA, TASS, Texas Accessibility Standard. Uh, a lot of facilities have those needs. Just over time, you know, they were built at a certain point in time. Then the codes changed, so you need different plumbing codes, different access for handicap accessibility and different things. And there's some of those that definitely need to be addressed, just due simply to the age of the facility as, as happens. We point them out mainly because over time they need to be addressed, but they are costly in the process because of items like plumbing, baseballs, tower. When you start working on those, those areas. You can see the ceilings and floors in that area as well. Drop off pickup improvements, uh, larger canopies, improved walkways, try to improve circulation, try to improve areas where, where kids are waiting to be picked up. Or where they're being dropped off here in weather conditions, uh, improve the roadways to help keep people in and out quicker as well with those adjacent canopies. New entrance to the middle school. Talked about several different options on that. I think that could go several different ways. Uh, got that big expansive uh, outdoor corridor that's being covered, which is great. Uh, possibly a way to make more of a secure entrance there in the front and make it more of an entrance in the front. As well as circulation between those two buildings with possible corridor or something to that effect. That needs some more study on it. Uh, but there's a lot of different options that could probably enhance the, the entry that we see. Then here's kind of some colored up, uh, the overall view of things and kind of just some notes that we've got. Uh, just as, again, I can't say it enough. This is just a starter point and some suggestions on this so that this process can evolve to what uh, the district chooses it to be. Uh, number one, add entrance, parent drop off north side of the middle school. We show that enclosed. That's not exactly accurate. I'm, that could be an option. I think what it more than likely would be, in my opinion, would be something closer up to the front of that. Canopy drop off would be, it's something to maybe connect those buildings and have an entrance up there at the front of that. Bus drop off at, at the front of the admin. As you can see, uh, from the library and cafeteria, cafeteria. Again, that's something that needs to be explored as, as potential option. All, all these are exactly that. Expand the existing middle school cafeteria into whatever can help possibly assist with that band hall area. Uh, new ag CT facility. We showed that. We've got some pictures of some other facilities that will show further down. Typically those are fifteen, twenty thousand foot facilities from what we see for districts, all size. And basically all sizes. And look, this is a really, really big district. Um, by the time you get the equipment and ventilation, the different things in there and then have a space to work, that's, that's pretty typical size. We kind of tried to show it in a potential area that seemed to make sense from a student circulation aspect and access to it to be not part of the building, but close to the building in the future. But again, that's just, just a suggestion. Uh, minor additions and renovations to the admin office. Um, as you can see, we've kind of put a block there for that. Got a little description here later and expand cafeteria kitchen at the high school. Any questions so far?
Looking at that ag building, where it's at, the condition that it's in, what, what are our options for that building if we was to get a new ag building on the existing ag building? What are some things that could go into that building to make good use of that space?
We've kind of uh, talked about throwing around some things as we've toured and walked around. Uh, you know, potentially a construction trades type setup. Might be something at some point in time. Uh, back there in where it is now, you know, it's, it's an older structure. And it's, it's not conditioned, right? Conditioner. Um, and it's got some needs such as that. So I would personally think it would be more adept to be something like a construction trades program or a storage area. Or something that's got more of that industrial area working in it. I'm not sure that the right, the right approach to that is to go and put air conditioning. Because insulation's probably not proper for the current energy code. And my, my gut feeling would be you can spend enough money in it that you probably wouldn't be, get your return on investment in that if it wasn't for something like that. But I think, I think as you work through this and start moving people from one area to another and need storage and different things, I, I, I really think it'll evolve to be a need for something. Um, additional considerations, reposition the, the football fields. Go ahead and jump over here. Uh, we've got the, that shown. I know there's been discussions in the past of moving the home side. Uh, to the other side of the field, leaving the visitor of where the old home was. The facility on the north, possibly uh, reper- getting rid of that facility and, and redoing that and then utilizing uh, obviously the new facility on the end with what it was meant for to start with. And then potentially, you know, looking at lighting and field surface and those kind of items as well. Um, on the baseball softball, been discussions of repositioning those buildings, trying to make the concession stand, uh, restroom. Areas work out better to be collaborative, to be both. I, I think trying to use it so that you can use one of those facilities for both fields is a great approach. Those little buildings, I, I have stood up in a board meeting and tried to explain why those buildings cost the amount they do more than anything I've probably ever done. Because every square inch of a concession stand is expensive. Because it's, it's, it's a small building, because it's got a lot of exterior wall, which makes it more expensive just by nature. But then every bit of it's got plumbing or electrical or toilets or uh, three compartment seat for the health department. And it just grows and grows and grows. You take a school and you build a new school, the kitchen may cost, you know, a high number per square foot. But the hallway is cheap, right? And then it all balances out to a number. On a concession stand, there's no balance. It's all high. So that's kind of why it's best to utilize those.
Have one rather than three.
It is, especially when, you know, you kind of use them part of the year and that's another spot to do that. So I think there's a lot of possibilities that could happen there. Uh, and it, it just needs to be explored further. Because I know there's a building out there and, and some of that. Beautiful. Uh, BOAG placement option, um, as we discussed, that's uh, one location that it could be. There's another location potentially that could be if it made more sense. Uh, needs to be looked at where the utilities are. How does that work for the next eighty years as a location? That, that's really what's most important. And does it balance out with upfront costs? And so uh, we showed it in both those locations. My opinion is that is the federal location, but district may feel better. Uh, obviously I look at things through the eyes of construction more than an educator, so. That's highly important in my opinion.
You got your greenhouse is in a pretty good location there too. Just throwing that out there where, with their, with that being in our senior parking lot. Whether you kept it or you redid it, that's, that would be something that would be looked at.
Yes. Yeah, it, it seems to be central to the things that are associated with it, for sure.
Another part we have to look, when you look at that right there, there's some options that have been done, especially if we're, you have the possibility of repositioning baseball softball and the kind of the drawing that he has right there. You know, so now your, where your current softball field is becomes some usable space. If we're looking at that, if we're gonna do something, then we're always having to look at doing some fencing to, to, to kind of control some in and outs. I mean, to make it to where it's going to be. If we're gonna have it to where it is usable for, for playoff games or things like that, where you control entrance to where it's um, if you have to charge a fee to get in, then you're able to do so. Uh, but if we're, if we put the BOAG building there and take, continue parking, then you know, another option we're going to look at is some additional parking possibly. So you know, a piece of that might be moving what's really east, I guess, uh, off the parking lot across the street to make that a little bit bigger. Even moving toward where the old pre-K building is, uh, if needed. But with that, you know, again, now that becomes, I know it puts parking a little bit away from your, from your baseball softball fields. But it does give a little bit more parking for that, uh, compared to what we have now and how parking's placed in there, um, for both those, for both those fields. Another consideration to love to think about when we have that conversation.
Or if you reposition the softball field, what are you gonna do with that area that was the softball field?
I have to become, I have to order the park.
And not just down near the bottom.
Correct.
Yeah, anywhere, obviously, anywhere you can double up on those, double use of those parking lots.
Yes.
Great way to go back. These are some pictures of some similar facilities that we've done. Uh, the district needs to do what it does. But uh, just to kind of give an idea of, of where things are in that particular field and the ventilation systems and the booths. And how it works out. That particular one in Chili Coffee, they decided to, we had a huge discussion over with those windows in and on. And if that has really turned out to be quite a facility, because it's opened up with daylight. You know, a lot of times you build a metal building and it's kind of dark. It is what it is in there, but that was a really nice upgrade that uh, someone less smart than me came up with. And then these are uh, some more, more Chili Coffee there and then the classrooms that we put the CT facility uh, at, holding in their welding shop. And just to kind of give you that look of how those are. So those, those are, those are some of their most used facilities. Uh, and they turned out really good. So it's always great to have a visual and count the starting place, but then it all, again, needs to morph into what the district wants it to be. Talked about adding some canopies at the front and the middle school. Uh, the, that's security, circulation, uh, drop off, weather, obvious for all those items. Um, those would enhance those quite a bit. We have some sample pictures of canopies. And there's, there's a lot of ways to do it. Those are some very popular ways to go about it. Uh, two different versions of how to do that. So uh, aluminum canopy on the left and then more of a frontier metal building structure on the, I'm sorry, frontier metal building structure on the left and then aluminum canopy on the right. Not a right or wrong answer on that. It's just to count some preferences. But those can do a lot more than just providing those for kids. They can really dress up the facility as well as, it's almost like a signage for your facility. Because it starts making you aware of where things are and kind of leads the traffic and the circulation in the right direction.
Any idea what that, that, on the left, about what that costs per foot right now?
Um, those canopies right now per foot are probably in the thirty-five dollar a foot, square foot, not linear foot.
And that's pitched?
Yes.
So it drains?
Yes. So that one is pitched and it drains off of it. The one on the right has an internal gutter system. And it actually drains through those columns. Ev- not every column, but every so often the column. The one on the left is actually a little less expensive than the one on the right.
Okay, so that, that has a gutter. Go back a pitcher. So if we were to do a canopy from where we drop off in the front. It's a bus or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Up here.
Right.
How would that, I know you've walked over this, but you don't see it much, but how would that drain if we went from here and covered it to here? Where this, yeah, that's enclosed to give us more, so the kids are, and teachers are protected from the weather.
Yeah, it, it's gonna have to, I mean, it, it'll be difficult. We'll probably have to have some underground.
I guess drains are now, but.
With that long expands, I would want to see that maybe it ties in through a downspout boot every so often to tie into a drainage pipe that goes under. Not a fridge drain, but an underground pipe that it could drain and go out from that way.
I think currently the drainage right there is there's um, in-ground drain right in front of admin. There in between the sidewalk and the admin building.
Okay.
Catches a lot of that, takes it somewhere.
So hopefully we can do it with just grading. That's obviously the less expensive way to do it. But if not.
So that might be an option.
Right. But if not, if it's that close, then we can go into that drain because we're not adding any additional capacity to that drain. That water's already going there anyway from where it falls, where it's not on the canopy, it just falls naturally. So that should be, should be a solvable situation. A lot more than the in, between those buildings was at one point in time when that drainage was solved. That was quite a, quite a chore over there. Um, this is the admin. We just showed a little lobby expansion and uh, uh, a little upgrade on uh, what we were talking about earlier is the, all those, the quaint restrooms or something like that, I think.
Oh, you're so appealing.
Appealing, that's what.
The one, yeah, the one.
The one.
The one.
It's.
Yeah.
Um, but really in reality, you know, this is a lobby expansion. I, if, if we were, if, if this takes fruition, I think you'd probably be better served to go ahead and extend that on out, the full width of that building. Because once you're working in that building, no more than the additional is, that'll give you some additional capacity and do some other things with, because you're pretty tight in there. And your students, it's, it's, that is a project that needs to happen with a greater project, just like a lot of these do. Because of, it's such a small expand again. You've got just simple mobilization costs. And what I mean by that is you're gonna have masonry on it. Well, it's gonna be better off if a mason's out here to do all this work than to do just that little project. Because they still have to have their crew and their equipment and all those things that cost what they cost just to get them here, so. With the obvious security best to go on from. A little more in depth on the football field, uh, new concession restroom. Uh, obviously we've got a great head start with the existing sports complex. I don't know, but we still need to do that on the north end and just glue that existing facility. It's almost good, also gives us an entrance, uh, type setup as well. Move the home side to the other side of the field. And then the variables that are gonna drive the cost of this project are, I mean, pretty straightforward, exactly what you think. The turf, uh, construction type of concession facility, replacing the lighting and then the type of press boxes and stuff. So those are all variables to be discussed on what the district's preference is on those things. But uh, I know some of those have been some, uh, long-term thoughts on those. Any questions on that facility? A little bit about the cost and current challenges going on, um, in the market. You, everybody's heard this story. I won't be a broken record. Getting material is unbelievably difficult right now. I've never seen anything like this, uh, in my time doing this. Uh, the labor availability as well is really difficult, as you know. It's a hot market. The Mount Eagle moving to the state of Texas is unbelievable. And it is just, uh, it's just a different time in the entire culture of things and getting things done. Um, you know, there was time and place where, had big rain events and things and you could just load up with more drywallers and more masons and more electricians to get things back on schedule. First of all, no one had. First of all, no one had more people because of the amount of work out there. And secondly, a lot of people defer not to work overtime any longer and all those things are affecting what's going on. So we've got to plan a little more timeframe on getting the projects done than we used to. I can remember, I'm, I'm turning to this guy, the I can remember guy. But, I mean, we used to build elementary schools, we used to wait and see what the enrollment was in September and then build them and open them for the next year. Well, that, that's not a possibility anymore because what happens is, if you put those type of time requirements on the project, no one will bid it because they can't find the resources to do it. And if they do bid it, they're gonna put such a premium on it that it'll run our cost up. So we've got to balance that equation all the way through so that we can get the most economical project that we can possibly get. And I can't express that. That's always been important, but it is so very important right now. My memory on the elementary school here was, was a nine or ten month project. Now it's probably more like a fifteen, sixteen month project, at least. Um, everything's at high demand, all that affects the leak time, the design times. And then another thing that we've got to check with now, what we'll do as we move through all this is there'll be different scenarios that come up to be priced and balanced on what things are, you know. Hey, what if we, if we, uh, moved the cafeteria here and make that the band hall and then do this and move the voag? And then that would be a scenario that we price out and try to price those things out. And then price it out with the schedule and how long it will take. Because we can do all this work at once, but have to do this at the end. So you can evaluate all those to make decisions off of. Um, so we'll continue to do that. But as you do, one of the new factors that's come about the past five years are storm shelter requirements. And depending on the code that's currently in place, there are storm shelter requirements. Once you expand classrooms or facilities, that you have to put in storm shelter requirements for, um, some codes, it's the entire facility, some it's just part of the facility, some, some don't have it at all. But there's a line that kind of comes from east and goes around towards Waco and kind of up through Abilene. And if you're above that line, then you have to build a storm shelter facility. I'm not saying this is good or bad, I'm just simply expressing that that storm shelter facility adds to that. A lot of times it'll be a gym or cafeteria or something like that, but that particular component of the facility adds additional cost to it because all of a sudden you've got a concrete roof and a shelter, doors that are shelterproof, weatherproof, tornado, tornado resistant, I should say, and all these types of things. So we'll just kind of have to see how that evolves because the need for that, the size of it will be dependent on what the plan comes out to be. So, but it's done the last, uh, four years for those facilities that we've built. I don't know of one that hasn't had a storm shelter on it because of the new requirements, so it's, it's a thing, so.
Now, if you, if you start and we do this, does that mean you have to add storm shelters to your other facilities? Or are you just talking about to what we're building?
So there's an ever-changing code. Right. And so, um, it was, at one point in time, it was if you added any capacity to the facility, let's make it easy, said it is. So let's say we were gonna do, uh, let's just say we're gonna do a classroom addition on one of the facilities, right? Well, then you, and it was for six classrooms. Well, the storm shelter couldn't just be for the six classrooms, it had to be for the entire facility. So what would end up happening would be with your six classrooms, it'd probably end up having to be eight classrooms to be big enough to be a shelter for everyone. And then the cost of those eight classrooms would be increased by over a hundred dollars a square foot because of those provisions that we want. Because there's a whole certification provision and all that stuff. There's been some recent changes where if you did six classrooms addition, then you only had to do a shelter for that sixth classroom. And there's several places that have chosen to do that. There's been entities that have waived it because it really doesn't make sense to do it for just the sixth classroom because you have to think, you have to think, okay, six classrooms, so that's a hundred and twenty kids. So, but we have a school for eight hundred, so who's gonna pick and choose the one twenty that get to go in there? I don't think anybody really wants to be in that position either. So we just have to see where the current regulations are and see what's required based on the process fee and how that affects the price and then make a, make a conscious decision. Okay, the point right now is, I don't know the answer to what we're gonna have to do, but it is something that we're gonna have to address because it, it is a real thing that's.
So, so say if we did kind of what we're looking at here, you know, maybe an ag facility and a cafeteria, um, and our stuff in the admin, and adding to that, are we gonna make, is that gonna put us in a position to where we may have to go to the elementary school up the road and put in a storm shelter there? Is that a step?
My interpretation is no on that. I, I've not seen anything to that effect. I, 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 I think it could possibly be where just, don't hold me to this because I'm, I'm, it all depends on which code you're currently under. It could be a scenario where it's just the vocational building, but you have to do it for, for the number of people that are in that building. Or it could be an interpretation where you have to do it for the whole facility. And that's where, if you did like cafeteria addition, then that would take care of that. Because, not to get the weeds on this, but a facility that has chairs and desks and those types of things in it, they don't give you, it's more like they give you eight square feet per person because there's more things in the way. If you have a gymnasium or a cafeteria that's more open space, then it's five square feet per person because you can obviously get people in there. So it's a different, different formula. It all just depends on which code that's on. So it's something that we'll have to solve as we move through, so. Okay, any questions on that? I didn't need to labor that one. Budget compilation, uh, we'll try to do, uh, uh, everything so you can see it just as transparent as we can. You have the construction cost, which is the obvious, you know, what it costs to, to build the facility, uh, the concrete, the masonry, the electrical, the plumbing, dirtwork, all those things, and that'll be a number. Then we'll have, um, uh, the cost escalation. You'll have to kind of make a decision on, we're gonna have a bond at a certain date and we still have a design period. And then what amount of inflation that we'd wanna put on that? Because unfortunately, in today's world, prices keep escalating. So that if you don't do that, then what can happen is, is you set a budget from this and then escalation gets it and then you don't get to do as much of the project as you wanna do. It's important to remember that whatever's chosen for all this, it is nothing more than a placeholder for the district's money. It's not my money, it's not the architect's money, it's no one's money, but the district's money to safeguard so that you can do the facility that you wanna do. Hopefully, it all comes in under it and you don't need any of it. That's a home run for everybody. But hope, like I always say, hope is not a plan. We have to kind of gauge where things are, look at it. We can look at a chart together and decide, okay, should it be one percent a month or should it be half percent a month? We can kind of bring some information and show you what's trending in the market to help make those decisions on. But it's, there is a little bit of a crystal ball of that because you just don't know what's gonna happen. And then we've got, I always love this term, soft costs. They're not very soft at the end of the day, but you've got all these other factors that are part of a budget for a project. You not only have the construction, but you have the design fees, being the architect, and engineering fees. Have to see if there's any, uh, pavement, uh, environmental needs that are needed. Burnt your fixtures and equipment. I mean, you can't have a new facility and not have the equipment for your welding shop and your classrooms and those types of things. Third-party code reviews, uh, your technology systems, bond fees and then contingency fees, especially on renovation work, um, or anything that may be encountered. So the majority of those items are state regulations that you have to have to do a project. So I just wanna make, make aware because you'll have, you hear people say, we got, you know, we did it for a dollar a foot and then somebody else says, we cost us three dollars a foot. Well, at the end of the day, what's the key to the front door price? And that's the hard cost, construction cost versus the soft cost, and that's what it is. The next steps in the process, um, have your architect, construction manager agent, financial advisor, know what your bonding capacity is, look at those things, and then morph a plan together as a team along with the district to look through those things and see what the needs are, what makes the most sense long-term, you know, makes the most cost-efficient plan and have a long, long-range plan for the district. Facility committee made up of members of the district to go through this process, give their input, give their ideas and help, help solve, you know, what needs to be done. Come up with that plan, present to the board at the end of the day on what they can act as a potential bond issue. And then fine-tuning the bond program. Potential timeline for that. September, October meeting, introduction, state of the district facility assessment, kind of go through this, kind of tour some facilities, kind of look at what needs to be done. Help that committee get a, a very well-rounded view of the facilities and what's taking place. You know, a lot of people, they drive by every day, but they don't see what's going on in those facilities. They remember, I mean, that's me with my kids, you know, my kids are, my youngest are juniors in high school now. I won't go in, I, what I see is the football field and the gym. I don't see the science lab and the math room and the, all the needs are because I just don't have a, a reason to do that. So those kind of things are very important to help everybody understand what the needs are and what's taking place. Uh, kind of October meeting, develop those options so that the budgets can be put together on what those different options are and have scenario A, B, C, and then modify those and come back with more options. Just let it keep evolving in the process. That's, that's what makes this work. It's not to, not to bring a committee a script because that's not what the committee's for. They're here to see what's best for the district to be decided. Look at more options, uh, as those narrow down. At the second meeting in October and then at the November meeting, bond amounts determine. Obviously, those can modify and change. Um, the importance is to just keep your eye on things because if you're looking, you know, as you are moving through this and deciding if the district thinks there needs to be a bond and if those things take place, then there's obviously state mandated dates that have to be met. Uh, for instance, if there's gonna be a May bond, you have to have it called by a certain date if it were. If there's gonna be a, a November bond that has to be called by a certain date, uh, I believe at the end of August. So if you miss those, then you're off track and then you're down the road because you can only have those two dates per the state of Texas. Any questions on that process at all? And then this is kind of a sample of the process and what's taken place through that planning and after the bond planning process. There's, there's not a script, every district's different. It's just kind of bringing some pros and cons of things, um, on a way to get that word out on what's taking place and get those organizations involved and get people involved that knows what's going on so that that committee can assist with that and help that be the driving factor behind that bond after that bond's called because it takes that committee to, to do those kinds of things. And this is some sample, um, of some process to get the word out on Easter. That's, these are just examples of the bond in Easter, uh, that we worked on and tried to get that information. It's just straight factual information on the needs and the numbers and the tax rates and the bonds and what those kind of things are. As well as this was one that, uh, we worked on with Farmersville on their current bond on what they need to do on their existing high school and around. Kind of quick, uh, any questions or thoughts or concerns that maybe I can, can address on that?
It's not really a question, it's more of just a concern for me as a police officer.
Uh-huh.
I know you can drive a vehicle from this high school parking lot out to the north end down to the mall. A two-door Jeep, I'm done it. Just to see if I could. Our back road back here is wide open, people use it as a city street all day long and all night long. Do, and as a facility like this, we're trying to get the best bang for our buck for our kids, I understand that. But do we have any reasonable expectation to help control flow of outside people into the facility? And I know that's just something to think about and everything, what we're trying to look for, you can do this and where we can do that and where we're spending money, but this place is wide open. Now, on any day, I'd go out here and catch people that just use this for a city street. And I'd just like to see us think about that sort of thing when it comes time for us to move stuff around and what we're looking at.
Great, great input. That's exactly, that's my point exactly is that this is just to get that process started. So you have a unique angle on this and that's very needed in this process so we can look at it and see. So when we get to the end of the project, that it is, it meets all the needs that can be possibly met.
And, and, and I don't know that we can make all that happen because when you take a facility like this, if we built a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit something, then we're trying to really make it. I don't know that we can do that, but I'd like for that to be part of the process to think about when we're considering that, can we control that access a little bit better?
As, as it should be, no doubt. Thank you for that.
Leadership, thoughts, questions?
I agree, I agree with Max a lot. When we, we went through this last thing and then considered, I don't know that that was really considered much. Um, having a master plan for maneuvering within the school district if you're an employee and then keeping people in and out, have the ability to do that.
Okay. That's great.
You know, no, we can't make it a prison, we can't have one way in, one way out, but it, I, I just want that to be a part of the process. If we put this here, how can we control that flow of traffic? And even more so, what Craig said, flow within the building, wi- wi- with our students and with our staff inside the school where we're just, everybody's scattered and going whichever direction they're gonna go.
Okay.
It may be a little, a little less convenient, but I think in the long run, it'd be a whole lot better in the safety scope of the thing.
Sure. And maybe that's where some things like we were talking about in front of that middle school where, you know, some, some more of a safety entrance and some connection between those two. You know, that's, that's kind of a prime example of, it's one thing to take all that outside area and, and close all that. But that's a, that's a, that's a lot of expense and maybe not a lot of gain at the end of the day on that that might prevent some other issues. Something done right there at the front to make a security entrance and to have a connection there. Something like that maybe can be done a little differently to help make that a much better situation than it currently is.
I'd definitely like to interject on the middle school. I think kind of watching that flow, because it is unnerving when you see five and, you know, fifth and sixth year graders just running them up. But talking about that breezeway, one of the things for me that's important is bringing those two buildings together. And we originally had talked about making like the front office or the main office and then a central workroom so that the teachers are coming together from the five, six building and the seven, eight building and they're intermixing as opposed to it feeling so isolated and also the flow of students. And so that's a lot of space, I, I wanna say to capitalize on, to make some common areas happen. Um, where again, we're kind of coming in the middle as opposed to it just.
Yeah.
It, it feels very isolated and those teachers don't get that time to collaborate and work together and, and see each other. And, and that makes a difference. Your kindergarten teachers that see your fourth grade teachers, it, it matters. Um, and so I think that and then thinking of those students, especially that five, six building, being able to utilize that breezeway space so that they're not outside so much. Um, they're contained, they're in the building.
Yeah.
So I think for me, those were some things I'd love to see with those two structures.
Okay. Makes sense.
I wanna mention something on the ag facilities, you know, thinking about going to something new.
I wanted to mention something on the ag facilities, you know, thinking about going to something new. Do we as a district want to think about maybe a facility for animals? You know, do we want to add that, I mean, I'm thinking, are we not? Yeah, a, a barn for, for taking care of animals or maybe it's like an outdoor classroom where you, I don't know, parents can come and do talks with your, with the, you know, your business that you're, that you're up for. Maybe somewhere do we want to house those animals here? I don't know if we want that close to the school, maybe just keep that in mind as we.
Okay.
Place that ag building.
Okay.
No, I was just gonna say, hey, tell them what Craig and Max were talking about. The way this thing's been kind of pieced together, and we talked about this before, it's really, really a problem with people just coming on and off, on and off, all different directions, all kinds, all, all different throughout the day. So I think this is an opportunity to hopefully pull some of that together, uh, more stuff that we can keep under, contained under one roof, um, or at least block off the access in some way. Um, I think that, I think there's, when I think about that ag building and placing it out there, kind of separate from everything else. To me, that's just adding to the problem we already got, separated. So I'm thinking, what if it was in the parking lot that is now the teacher parking lot, right here behind the school? So we can all kind of meet her together, um, as opposed to out. And then you can kind of read it all together then that way, just a thought.
Yeah.
That would also solve the parking problem, the way down on those two parking spaces.
So talking about moving, if we close the breezeway up, a lot of teachers park over here. A lot of them park in the front. To get them to come together like you're talking about, the parking lot, are you looking at the teachers using just to get your.
I think it would depend on entrance wise. Um, if you have, you know, an access, if, I mean, we have, all of us have the swipe. So I think as long as there's a good central spot where teachers can come in, you know, they, they park everywhere. I mean, it's hard to say.
Yeah, but that parking lot on the north side is large enough, I think, for the majority of teachers in the middle school. And again, part of that, looking at a, at a, bringing those two buildings together is also from a parent's standpoint. When a parent comes right now, we have more parents not, not sure which office to go to.
Yes.
So if we can make that north entrance, if we can make that the central office for the middle school building, it, now they come to the office on the north side. I mean, it's not, do they come to what would used to be the intermediate office or do they go to the middle? It's, that's the office, you know. So I think it, I think that piece there itself, um, brings a lot, brings a lot of things together of what we're trying to do and need to do with the fifth, to eighth grade campuses.
Is that automatically what you're talking about, teachers having an opportunity? That just pulls them more into one parking lot? So you're thinking that they're parking over here, we got a lot of space out here. What do we maybe think about then with this space out front? Because like right now, it's cool because of the game, but during the day, can we utilize it?
Sure. That's all great. And that's, again, like, this is just to get, that's all, that's all of this.
It's fun, I love when you bring, I think that's what I love about the committee, because we all come with different perspectives. You know, I'm coming more from the instructional, teacher collaboration piece of that, parents. You know, staffing, how much staff does that take? How many, if you're staffing, where Jennifer's coming from, okay, how can we improve our CTE programs? I mean, I think that's what I love is you're bringing Max and thinking, traffic flow, security, students runners when they run from the buildings. Uh, you know, so all of those pieces, and that's what makes it, you know, at a time like this, when it's so crucial to kind of think three sixty around it. Uh, to make sure that this is the time to maximize the space.
Tell me, we already had this conversation, I know he and I, uh. What are we, whatever we do for a cafeteria up here, if it's gonna be shared between the middle school and high school, if that's the plan, and I don't know that that is, but if that's the plan, it has to be big enough to where you have one lunch for the high school kids and one lunch for the middle school kids. That means every high school kid eats at one time, because it'll wreck your schedule.
Yeah.
If, if you do, have to do otherwise.
How many are in six, seven, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, together total?
Five hundred kids.
Five hundred. She doesn't pay, you know, you don't want to be able to pay five hundred and get the kids in, so you have to look at one's face.
Well, and speaking of watching the middle school lunches, if you've ever worked, if you're Dr. Mattel, if you've never worn middle school lunches, boy, that is an eye-opening experience. Uh, and putting those kids, it's the way that they have it flowing now, you're kind of thinking of discipline issues. So when you talk about bringing fifth through eighth grade, you know, I'm of the mindset, fifth is still elementary. I like them nestled away from, in case any of you have eighth graders, wow, they're interesting people too. To kind of keep that group separated, uh, and so that's what you have to consider too, is you are running really an intermediate still. Uh, so those fifth graders coming up, no different than freshmen and seniors. Uh, is that exposure, so how are you gonna have them seated? Are you gonna try to run a five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten? Because right now, we have it as an existing, both campuses share the same bell schedule. So now you're talking about how do we flow, how do you supervise five hundred students? Uh, in the cafeteria at that time.
So, right.
So, just saying, do you take volunteers, former students? Just want some entertainment, so.
Yeah.
Please come anytime, follow me.
All right, thank you all for that. That's great. Okay. That's kind of our thoughts on things, thank you for your time, explaining it. We're, we're here to help you through that process, so we're good. Thanks again for having us.
Any further business? Seven twenty-two P M, this meeting is adjourned.